All right, everybody, I'm going to call the Select Board meeting back to order. We just returned from Executive Session. Now, we have, we're of a joint meeting with FinCom and with the School Committee, so you're welcome to open your meetings.
I'm calling the October 10th meeting of the Finance Committee to order.
And I'm calling the October 10th Joint Committee Meeting for the School Committee.
All right. I was going to take the lead from Mr. Snyder from before and then set some ground rules, but I think we're all, we all know to be respectful and I think I have to say that in this room, so. I did want to start with two of the items, the free cash and then the overlay, kind of going out of order. That way, the School Committee can chime in on their part and they can stay or they can, they can take off if they'd like. You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, I'm ready to go. Get ready.
So, in front of you, I, you have the potential use of free cash. We started with a balance of $6,524,039. I'm recommending $1 million go into stabilization, $1,500,000 into capital, $125,000 into OPEB. Then, the articles that we have, we'll use $50,000 of free cash for an engineering drainage improvement. This will be to hire an engineer to do a study on Barrows Court area. And then, we have another property on South Worcester Street, kind of across from the fire station there where the water comes off the road and goes through the property and we need a drainagement there. Schematic design for the middle school roof, $50,000. Separation expense, $163,159. $150,000 for pond management. Prior year bills, $1,884. The budget supplements, $792,715. Snow and ice, $280,000. And with that, it'll leave a balance that we can carry forward to be used in the future of $2,411,281.
Okay, I'll, I'll start with questions from the board here, or the Select Board.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Eisen.
Mr. Enos, could you help me understand the budget supplements, please?
The budget supplements?
Yeah.
Sure. So, in the budget supplements, you have those in front of you. I know that with the police and fire, I asked them to look at what was cut from their overtime and told them that we would look at putting 75% back of what was cut in overtime. So, those are obviously two large ones. And then, the school department has two requests, $329,292 and $160,802. I have in there $50,000 to bring the reserve fund back up where it previously was in years past. You know, it should be going up, not going down as our budget increases. Then, we have some expenses that need to be increased. And then, salaries, we need to add salaries to increase the town clerk now that we have to hire a full-time town clerk. And then, we have salaries for departments that are part of an agreement after the wage and salary plan was done in, in the contracts. So, those are salary adjustments in some of the departments.
So, Mr. Enos, the $81,616, that's the 75% of the overtime?
Correct.
And the police and the fire is $174,765?
Correct.
Thank you.
Good. Mr. Chair.
Mike, can you explain to me why some of these salary expenses? I don't remember any of these being cut or reduced in the original budget. Why are we supplementing like town manager, treasurer, et cetera with additional salary?
That was part of the adjustments in the salaries as part of the wage and salary plan we had done, the study. And as part of our agreement negotiated with the Select Board and the Sena A Union for one, that there were four positions in the Sena A Union, the treasurer, the COA director, the building commissioner, and the assistant treasurer collector, whose salaries were below the 50th percentile in the survey. And it was agreed that there'd be an adjustment to their base salary this year and next year to bring them up to the 50th percentile. And then, so they'll take care of that in two years. And then, the other request in Select Board is the Select Board, the assistant town manager position was below and that would be a three-year adjustment to bring that position up.
So, why is that on the Select Board?
Say that.
So, you're saying that that's the, the expense that's under Select Board or on the town manager?
Town manager.
Anything else, please?
There's several that have additional expenses as well. Where are those coming from?
So, let's see. On the Select Board expense, that's for printing. We recently needed to go out and have purchase orders printed and there was only $100 appropriated in line item and there wasn't enough. And then, under expenses for town manager, also printing and conference assessors, that is for... That has, I know that has to do with the system that she uses for her evalu, reevaluations. She needed to increase that by 3,000. Debt processing, we have reduced the hours of our consultant that we use on a four days a week for Adam. That would bring him, he was reduced to two, that would bring him back to the four. Because we're in the new building and there's more technology, we really can use that support. And I know recreation, their expense increase, they, she forgot that this year they have to put, I know it's not, I'm probably not using the right terminology, but more mulch underneath the swings down at the Tricentennial Park. So, that is the major part of her expense. Council on Aging, I know that's for... What's that?
Pest control.
Yeah, it's pest control and one other item. Memorial and Vets, we're just adding more money back into that, that was cut. And then, as James told you today, the interest, he just received information today on that for the short-term notes, one for the school and then further you can see for the water. And he just got that about 5:00 today, so that's what you see there, the interest that we needed to add. So, that total on the supplements is $1,019,205. And we still have $226,491 we can raise and appropriate, so that's why that number is reduced to $792,714.50.
Anything else to these?
Yeah, no, it just seems like many of those expenses we should have anticipated and included in the original budget. I'm not sure I'm going to see them in the supplemental for the fall, but let's go right at it, okay?
Mr. Snyder?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, do we have Alec on the Zoom? Look at me pretending I can't see that far.
Doesn't appear so.
Okay. All right, my, my question is, is again, I think third meeting in a row, do we have the one-time expenses for the DBW Director?
We do not.
Okay, is there a reason?
It's just something that's going to take time to get established, though. You know, we don't have the position or place for the DBW Director to go yet, so it's just something we have to work on to get that position established. And we can put that in our May budget.
Okay, how did you able to fund the position, full-time position? We're lacking the funds to be able to fund an extra head. Particularly, my concern is, I know like as someone who's part of the charter commission when Richard brought this up, the desire for it was because it would be an engineering head that would save us engineering dollars, consolidate resources, save money for the town. And when I heard the presentation for the DBW head in front of the FinCom and even one of the board, it was said that it wouldn't be someone that would be able to save any engineering dollars, probably couldn't consolidate any of the resources. So, I don't see the benefit anymore to doing that if we're not saving money for the town.
Well, one, to answer your question, well, I mean, the town voted, and so that's, that's something that we're required to do.
I think that's, I think that type of vote, right? It was going to save money, engineering costs, consolidating resources.
Yeah, personally, I believe it will, but at the same time, it's, it's something that the town voted on several years ago and it's, there's still not a step in the right in that direction, which, you know, I was trying to take with this free cash, at least the very small part, and get the, whether we do it, whether we use those funds in six months or a year, those funds will be devoted to that particular item, which is what, which was my goal, and then to eventually get that worked into the budget for next year. So, that was my thought on that. I guess it's a fight for another day, because I don't want to take everybody's time on this one. Any other questions from the Select Board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Eisen.
Are you going to the School Board next to get what they requested for?
Yeah, you're looking at my notes? I was, I was going to open it up to any questions on the other items too, and then the School Board can go, the School can go through theirs. So, are there any?
Madam Chair, through you. Mike, the expenses for the municipal building and for highway, what are those exactly? You didn't mention those.
Which one are you looking at?
The municipal building, $6,000, and highway expense, $9,500. What were those?
So, the municipal building is, we handle all the trash pickup, all the maintenance of all the town buildings and just reviewing that, it just wasn't enough based on what we had approved in May. So, that's what that, that expense is. And highway, the $9,500, I'll tell you. That, that's for the repair to their sweeper that needs to be done?
Okay, and they didn't anticipate that repair needing to be done in the spring? And then, what about the animal control expense?
That's my phone. Everybody's going off tonight. Even before, there were meetings earlier.
That was for... He needed some money for some repairs to his AC system at Animal Control. And he didn't put enough in under expense for maintenance and repairs of his vehicle.
Okay. Um, for, I know this would be a next year thing, but for next year, it would be really helpful and save us a lot of time, I think, if all of, the breakdown of everything was just on this sheet, so we had that before to look at too. I think so.
Yeah, it might save some awkward silences. Anyone else with questions on this, the free cash?
I have, I have a question. So, I'm looking at the town clerk and I know we had reduced that salary because we thought it was going to be two part-time people. So, I understand bringing it back up to what it was, but I don't understand why it's now a 22% increase over last year. Is that $60,000 going to be used fully for the new salary? Is that how much of an increase we're expecting?
So, we're, we're figuring that the salary is going to be in the $90,000 range and by the time that position starts, the $60,000 would cover that.
So, was it only $30,000 that was in, that was?
What was originally in the budget? She was, the current, the town clerk was budgeted part-time and she'd been working full-time the last couple of months.
Why would we do that if she was budgeted part-time?
She lost, she lost her assistant because the assistant left and went to another town, so she was working full-time because, because, so the office would be covered.
Anyone else? Nothing, sir. Okay.
I don't know if anybody on Zoom wants to.
Is there anybody on, I don't see, you can see it better than me. Is there anybody turn your hand up?
I see Paul and Brandon, I don't know if they had any questions. I don't see them, I'm reading, so.
Okay. All right, anyone on the School Committee with questions there? Do you, would you like to go over your, the funds for your, like 321, 292, or the 16802?
Sure. So, we're asking for 321, 291, and 86 cents to establish some pro-rated positions back into our budget with the idea of hiring these people around January 2nd. Positions we're looking to bring back would be our elementary math and elementary reading specialist. Both those positions would be for $28,406.94. We would look to bring back the middle school art teacher and middle school music teacher, both those positions also for $28,406.94. We'd also like to bring back about half, give or take, of our academic coordinators. Those are traditionally what people kind of refer to as the department heads. School Committee felt that there was some, you know, your core subjects and whatnot around, you know, there's a whole union thing that we got to worry about as well, but looking to bring back about half of those for your teacher leadership positions, and that would be across all five schools. The total there, and again, these people aren't new, they're already in our schools, they were just beginning to be stipend. So, the additional money there is, in total, would be $54,171.99. Hopefully, with those that are already here, we would hopefully bring those back November 1st and obviously run them through the fiscal year. The elementary specialist, again, that would bring us back to the 23, 24 levels. The specialist, you know, are throughout all three elementary schools, obviously LG, JCS, and the Hay. And that would be a total of $71,592.11. And then, we would like to put in, which I think in the long run is going to save us some money, is putting in permanent building subs for each of the schools. So, we would have five permanent building subs that would cost us a total of $81,900. So, our total for positional increases, if you will, is 321, 291, 86. The other thing we have on here is our Chapter 70 funding. The state, you know, we budgeted, obviously, for the, for this, you know, fiscal year, we budgeted for what has been traditionally the minimum of $30 per student. Obviously, since the governor and the state has finalized their, their budget, they've actually increased that fee to $104 per student. So, that would give us an increase of $160,802, so $160,802 on the Chapter 70 funding. Under the recommendation from the superintendent, would do, put about $68,500 into our new special ed out-of-district placements. We've netted since budgeting season and everything else, we've netted plus one student who is in our district who we have to send somewhere else, so that would hopefully offset that cost. And then, our, the rest of that money, $92,302, would go into our homeless transportation, which was generally, you know, what we put in for our budget and what we've spent over the last five years is definitely a little different. So, those are those ones. And then, obviously, the schematic design for the Norton Middle School roof, I think everyone's kind of heard, that roof's been an issue since, I think, 1998 when we built the building. So, just looking at, drawing up the actual, you know, plans and whatnot with engineers is up to $50,000. We don't, we hopefully don't think it will cost that much, but those are the money that we are looking for. I think ultimately, the School Committee looked at this as a, you know, no one wants to use recurring revenue. You know, I think we have $1.3 million in turnbacks, you know, across different budgets or whatever. So, our, our hope would be to get some of these positions reestablished. I think the School Committee's big thing here is, is we don't have the luxury to, we start up September 1st. You know, we, we have to roll with the budget that we got with the additional free cash here. It does help us offset, you know, hopefully, some of these positions. Our goal as a committee, in the five of us, was to do the biggest bang for our buck. You know, what that means is, how can we affect the most kids possible with the programming and teachers, you know, to try to make that as successful as possible? So, that was kind of our goal behind it. And I think, you know, $321,000 isn't, you know, I don't think we're, we're being too greedy by any means. So, that's where we're at.
Thank you, Nick. And my question was, I know you touched on this previously at other meetings, but is there any thought of those positions that you're bringing back, ensuring that they stay on? I mean, unless there's obviously any, any issue?
I think as we know, there's nothing in the world that's right besides death and taxes. So, as much as I would love to sit here and guarantee that we're not going to be in this position, we don't, you know, and I'm not going to sit here and make promises. I think the School Committee, looking back on, you know, budgeting season and, you know, of the 29 positions and, you know, kind of what we were dealing with, I do think there's some appetite to kind of look at this again to say, hey, wait a second, you know, the middle school seemed to have gotten hit really hard. You know, so I, I do think, you know, I don't want to sit and make promises by any means, but I do think, you know, we would try to look for all potential, you know, solutions to not end up cutting these positions again. The good thing is on our side, the academic coordinators aren't a position to be cut, if you will, we're not cutting people. The long-term subs, you know, for building subs, that's not a recurring expense, though it is a nice thing to have, obviously. You know, the only real ones that we'd really be worrying about is, is the math and, I mean, I'm sorry, the art and music teacher. Even the specialist, usually the specialist bumps up from another teacher and how the union contracts work. You know, so I think, ultimately, I think we're in a kind of a good spot that I don't, hopefully, foresee us cutting these positions again. But again, we know how everything works, it's a, it's a, it's a changing system, so.
Thank you, that answered my question. Anyone?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Eisen.
Couple of questions. How many of these positions are new hires and how many are they are people who are already there and you're giving them a stipend?
I would assume, obviously, because with the, with the specialist, you're probably going to have a teacher move into the specialist role, which would, then we'd have to backfill with probably a new teacher. Everybody, so I would say technically it would be four, because you would look at art, music, and the two specialist. In some trickle form, we've probably hired four new people to our list.
Yeah, for the specialist, you'd have to move around the positions that got filled.
Correct. You'd be backfilling, again, an English teacher or, you know, whatever. Math teacher goes to be the math specialist and then you got to refill that math spot. So, I'm looking, I think we're looking at probably the four new hires, however, they're new for, I guess for this year, but we had these positions last year.
It's a position that we're just trying to refill again.
Exactly.
And do you, do you foresee being able to find people to fill those positions?
Administration seems like if we kind of shoot for that January 2nd, you know, we, we do believe we'll be able to fill them, you know. There's a lot of, we still, we still are seeing COVID trickle down of some of these, you know, student, college students who have been off, you know, missed a semester, started a little late, whatever it may be, finishing up their student teaching in the fall semester, where it'd be a perfect kind of jump into, you know, come on with Norton, you know, for the, for six months or so and then, you know, look for a full-time job. It's kind of a win-win. I mean, are we going to get, I think, I think all teachers can kind of say, you don't have a lot of whole moving around, you know, between December and January, so I don't think we're going to be looking at, you know, veteran teachers that would be pulling over here, but administration seems to think that we'd be able to get the positions retired, you know, rather quickly.
And on your Chapter 70 funding, wasn't that amount, that $107 a student, already figured into the budget, Mike?
It was.
No, we were funded at $30 per student, not $1,000.
When we passed the budget in May, we included that hundred, extra $104 in our calculation already.
How would you have done that? We had, we had no idea what that number was, the state didn't serve them. We know what the state moves, they're not moving on in May to have their budget done.
In, so Chapter 70, at the Maytown meeting, and what was approved by the final conference committee, it, it didn't change. We, we knew they were talking about changing it to adding $104 and we put that in the estimates at the time. and we put that in the estimates at the time.
The original amount that we got back in April, we had to give the 1% budget. It was that 1% budget request was before we got the final amount with the $104 per pupil estimate. So the tri-sheest estimates that we received, the school council received, it was at still 30. So if it did change, extra in the bottom line, it didn't affect our overall budget number.
I was going to say to clarify, it wasn't adding 104, it's changing from 30 to 104.
Correct. Seventy-four additional dollars.
Seventy-four dollars difference.
And when we figured out our anticipated state aid, we put that in figure was in the calculations at the time.
So I guess my, my question to the school board is, when you made your budget, did you figure on the 34 or the 107?
30.
30.
30. So somewhere there's numbers up in the air, it seems to me.
There's a disconnect between.
Right. It just, I guess I'm a little confused by that.
I'm with you.
Any other questions?
Yep, I got just a couple more, really quickly. I guess my biggest concern about this whole proposal is that it's sustainable with a 3% budget increase for next year. And if you're telling me that you think it is, we're going to go, I'm going to base my decision on that rather than other things. And is it, is it very disruptive to the schedule to be bringing in new hires in January? And how does that figure into moving teachers around in your buildings?
That's a great question. I think one of the things that we actually looked at was bringing back Norton Middle School foreign language as well, that even washed out a previous school committee meeting. And the issue with that was, was the schedule and how it would affect not just the eighth grade, it would affect the entire middle school, not to mention with the special education and moving them around powers or whatever. So we actually pulled that back because it would be a significant issue with scheduling. Administration was very vocal about how difficult that would be. These positions aren't nearly as disruptive to the schedule. You know, obviously, anytime you add people, something's going to move around. But obviously, we do have, we do have the holiday break and winter break there that, you know, our administration is fairly confident that this would be a pretty seamless transition.
And just to add to your other question about like the sustainability of this, another key point just to keep in mind is that this is a negotiation here, the teacher contracts. So depending on, obviously, how that all transpires, that's also something to take into consideration in terms of sustainability.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Anyone have a pick on?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Nick, the permanent building subs, that would be a new thing? Would that be a new thing?
No, so we've always had them, and then years ago.
That was something that got cut?
Yeah, we kind of cut them during the budget process.
Years ago, so that you haven't had them for some days?
No, and then if we can bring them back, we've been trying to bring them back that paid for our choice fund, where we paid all of our subs. So we've been trying to build the subs back into the budget a little bit. But the permanent building subs to have a sub there in each school is much more helpful.
Yeah, my concern definitely is the sustainability. Just knowing that all of your expenses go up every year, especially with special education, transportation, those things that aren't really in your control, worrying that, you know, these people just have to be laid off again is not ideal. And if you're going to cut teacher salary, I guess, to make up for it, it sounds like possibly?
No, I was saying that we have teacher, we have negotiations. So depending on how the contract is, transpires in that negotiations and what they ask for, whatever, we add, we, you know.
Negotiations for their salaries?
For their, for their, yeah.
Their contracts.
So Norton Teachers Association contract is up in June 30th, 2025. We are not in negotiation yet, but we're pushing that way of negotiating the new round of contracts starting July 1st. That is going to have a big time factor in on what our budget is going to look like and what is sustainable moving forward. Because like any job in any profession, your salary is your biggest line item expense, you know. So, you know, that's going to determine.
This would be after the, the spring budget season, though, for the FY '26.
We're hoping to get negotiations done so we can get that.
So we can anticipate.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but we just.
But yes, you're on.
But we just don't know how.
And you're correct. Negotiations might go longer in spring, and then we're going to be playing with a projection. That's going to be difficult, you know.
Right, okay.
So I, I think we do have Alec on Zoom, so. Alec, can you hear us? Okay, we'll go back to that later. Okay, I'm going to make sure that there's no more questions from the board. And we'll go to anybody with their hand raised there.
I have to ask a question to keep you satisfied, Steve. Can you guys annualize those costs? I know you're doing it for half a year. You don't do it tonight, obviously. Can you send it to us what the annualized costs are going to be for the positions that you are bringing back? And what you think the impact will be also to the fixed and shared expenses? Like, are these people going to have health insurance and all the other things? You know, when you get it yet, so we have an idea what that, what that looks like. And second, Steve, if I could address a comment that you made about the, not the board health inspector, the public works director. As you, somebody can know, I've been running businesses since I was 25 years old, selling the size of the town of Norton's budget. I have never hired a manager that hasn't paid for himself. So I would suggest to the board that they bring somebody on as an interim for one year. If they can't, at least at minimum, at minimum, and I'm telling you, at minimum, pay for their own salary, then they're not worth anything. And that's, that's the route I would go on that. And I agree with you that the people voted for this, and we just keep ignoring them and ignoring them. I'm not sure, you know, kind of democratic process that is, but, but that's just my two cents on that.
I know we're discussing quite a bit in the budget meetings. Okay, Alec, is there a speaker on one of these? Okay, great. Did you have any questions to add?
I, I, everybody that's everything that I have written down.
All right, thank you. Okay, anyone else?
I have to. So I know, again, going back to sustainability, I think I remember you saying that you're using more in school choice this year than what you're going to have next year. Is that, is that still the case? Do you know what the differential is? How much less you're going to have next year?
We don't know how much less we're going to have next year because we just, our formula has changed. We're not bringing in as many students this year in our elementary school, so we don't, we don't specialize in those types of reports. We do the first one in October for the winter, and then we do our other report in spring. So then we tend to a general estimate, but it's a little too early.
Was it 1.9 that you spent this year? Is that correct? 1.9 million?
We're going to be, we budget about 2, yes.
Okay. And I think you, you had planned you would only brought in like 1.2 last year?
Yes, we just rolled over.
Yeah.
And if we do save some money in the general public budget, then we would back those on the school choice suspicion for years as we are ever getting that.
If I could add just one note to talk about, because I know a few folks asked questions about the teacher's contract, which I think is really important. We're governed by collective bargaining laws and bargaining in good faith, not to speculate or hypothesize as to any potential outcomes in those negotiations. So just, I know that's on people's minds, but we have to go through the process in good faith. So it really precludes us from drawing any conclusions at this time as to what that impact would be.
Okay, anyone else with questions? Did someone have their hand up on Zoom?
I do.
Okay, just go ahead and state your name.
Masha.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I just wanted to know if there was any way that we could, like, vote on what position? Because I, I think that everybody in the community would like to see the arts and the, the language brought back and stay back on, on the roster. And I'm not saying the other positions aren't necessary, but I think that those are the ones that have the biggest impact on the community. So is there a way for us to vote specifically on which positions that we can bring in without all of the extras?
I'll, I'll let the school committee take that, but I don't, I believe that would be something they'd take up at one of their meetings, but.
Is there a way for you to vote on positions? No. The school committee also's purview isn't based on positions either. That is the superintendent's job. The school committee obviously listens to our constituents. We would definitely invite you to, you know, to a school committee meeting. We've heard about the arts from, you know, especially from the music band chorus side. And again, we are hopefully reestablishing the arts with both art class in the middle school and also music back in the middle school. So those are two positions. The, the school committee also felt foreign language was very important. And again, we, we did make a, a push to try to get those back in. However, you know, due to the logistics of everything and the, and the, you know, way the schedule works out at the middle school level, administration felt like that would be a very, you know, tedious process and also nearly impossible because it would affect every single student at the middle school, even though you're bringing in, which would be two, you know, foreign language teachers in the eighth grade. So, oh, and, and actually, the high school as well, because as you move, you know, you open two new positions, there's a potential for another teacher to move somewhere else, which does open up a little bit of a, you know, within the union itself, people can kind of move around. So it would affect a lot bigger of a, of a scope. And the administration felt for, you know, the, the six months of those two positions, you know, for the, for the spring, it wasn't, the, the juice wasn't worth the squeeze, if you will. But again, we're always, we're, we're trying to do what is best for the community. So I definitely, you know, urge anybody who has thoughts and opinions to definitely come to a school committee meeting, because we'd love to hear from you.
Okay, thank you. And I'll take any questions from the audience if anybody has anything. Oh, good.
Sorry, one more question. I didn't watch the school committee meeting where you voted on the budget supplements. Did you all vote unanimously for this?
It was 5-0 across the board.
And just to add to with the world language, due to the scheduling, they also were saying that depending on some students who require special education services and the way that their schedules go, if they were to add world language, that it may actually require us to hire additional staff in order to make it all work, not just the world language. Like, it was going to have a very large trickle effect outside of that. So then it would have caused us to then maybe ask, you know, add any more to the supplement, if that all kind of makes sense.
Yeah, they would compete the schedule.
Yes, yes.
All right. Are there any other questions? Is that good?
I would suggest that, Nick, you refer people to the meeting that you guys had on that, on that subject, because you guys dug into, I watched the meeting, into details, you know, how the, how you make the sausage behind the scenes and what it affects, you know. So I would just suggest anybody watch that meeting where they really dig into the details or why it's more difficult than it sounds to bring back the foreign languages, which, you know, I, I support it as well.
Okay, if there are any further questions, I guess we can start taking some motions.
Can I just make a comment first?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, I mean, I know we've had a lot of conversations about not spending free cash on ongoing expenses, and every one of these budget supplements is an ongoing expense, right? I mean, we're, we're adding to the base, we're adding to the total appropriation for all these budgets. You know, budgets that were modestly increased or even decreased in the spring are now seeing 3, 4, 5, 6, 20% increases. You know, I had, I had made a kind of a point in the spring about saying I really wanted to have the whole picture. If we were going to use any supplements in the, in the fall, I wanted to know about them upfront so I can kind of factor that in. Right now, again, it's, it's throwing off all those numbers. What was a 1% increase, you know, for school and for, for, for town, for the general government? You know, now we're looking at, I can't remember the numbers here. Now we're looking at 4.2% for town and for 2.3% for schools. So, I mean, the, you know, all of the analysis we did in the spring, all of the cutbacks we did to try to be fiscally responsible, we were trying to break, to wean down, wean off of free cash use in our budget. Last year, we spent 1.9 million. We only spent 1.2 in the spring, and I was okay with that at that point because it was a decrease. Now we're going up past 1.9. So, you know, I'm okay with spending the 226,491 that was left over from FY '25. I would be okay with the town clerk because I think that's a change from what we knew in the spring. We did, we wouldn't have anticipated that we would have gone from two halftime to one full-time. And the 160 in the schools, you know, in terms of the fact that you did get what you wanted, was not anticipated for you, an increase there, you know, those, those add up to 220. Those are, those would be the two that I would support. Everything else is, again, just this big shelving that we keep planting every year. I don't think it's fiscally responsible. I don't think it's sustainable. And every single one of these, again, is going to be a one, an ongoing expense that we're spending one-time funds on. So yes, we have more free cash this year. I'd be happy to see that go into next year's budget or stabilization or, you know, in terms of capital, those types of things, those truly one-time expenses. But I can't support, and, you know, and it's not that any of these are not deserving. It's not that I don't think, and this kind of kills me even to say this, you know, everybody knows me, you know, isn't the biggest bleeding heart liberal. This is not an easy thing for me to say, no, I don't want to give anybody money. I know it's all needed, and I appreciate everybody who's, who's advocated for their departments to, you know, to increase their budgets because that's, that's your job, right? That's, that's what we expect you to do. But again, it's not sustainable. It's not fiscally responsible. It's not what we talked about in the spring. And if we're going to make any changes in the fall, we really need to know about that in the spring. And we really not, need to not be getting these supplement sheets a week before the town meeting warrants do, to try to go through all these numbers, not having time to process. This is, I, I can't see numbers for the first time and vote the same night. That's, you know, inherent information of vote the same night. That's not a, you know, a great way of, of handling any, any committee. So that's my stance on all these. I don't know if we're going to take this as one big thing or if we're going to take it line by line, but, you know, there's only two things on here that I would support. Oh, and actually, the, the short-term interest and the fixed and shared, because they're fixed. You can't do anything about those, right? Those we're stuck with. Yeah, the, the two fixed and shared, the Medicare and the short-term interest. So that's, that's my stance.
Good, Nick.
Mike, the stabilization, by putting a million into that, what percentage does that bring us up to? I know the state recommends 3% to 5%.
We'll, we'll be just over 5% of that.
Okay, so it'll be over 5%.
So if we, if we put in.
Is it, is it definitely just over 5% or just under? Because I thought last time Wade said it was just over.
And the hope would be that, so the interest that it earns this year will be sufficient so that next year we won't have to be as aggressive funding again. Maybe we won't even have to fund the next year.
So with an FY '25 budget of $77,157,764, we should be at $3,857,888. With this, adding this million, we would be a little above that. So we would be at 4,000, I mean, $4,170,113. So that would give us a little cushion, so depending on, you know, 5% is obviously the minimum, but then next year, we wouldn't have to add a lot of money. We could leave it and stay at a 5%, or if we have to increase it a little bit to maintain a 5% with any increase in the budget. Or if we wanted to put up, put more into it, that would be a discussion. But it would get us there, so next year, we wouldn't have to worry about it.
And the state recommends 3% to 5%, correct?
Yeah.
And in capital, what is in that account right now and then how much is this going to increase by with that at 1.5?
So right now, in capital, the budget, the amount right now is FY '24. It was $512,526.92. And with this money we're putting in, if we approve the capital plan that's recommended, we'd be going into next year with 700, a little over 700,000 in capital.
Now, if you approved everything that was on capital that was going to come, right? So that would fund the, the funding included in the request for this year. Okay. And then how much, how much turnbacks did we have total? I think someone said it was 1.3 million in turnbacks. Is that, okay. So we have $1.3 million that wasn't spent from fiscal year '24.
That is filed as free cash.
That now gets certified as free cash. I understand that. Okay. So $1.3 million, technically speaking, though it does get certified as free cash, it was already budgeted for.
Correct.
Okay. So we have one, I think to me, that's the number of 1.3 million dollars is where we can hopefully fund some of these positions, whether it be the schools or, you know, the other positions that we talked about, because that money is already in our budget. We're not adding additional money to our budget. Though it gets certified as free cash, we're not looking at a $6 million in recurring expenses. We're looking at, give or take, 800,000, correct? Okay. So that still leaves us $500,000 that was already budgeted for that is not reoccurring, correct? Okay. That's all I got.
I just want to repeat something that I said at the FinCom meeting about the stabilization account. I respectfully disagree with our town manager. This is our savings account, okay? We sit there and say, oh, we need a minimum 5% to satisfy the bonding agencies. Well, that's all well and good. If we had funded our stabilization account year in and year out and year in and year out, you wouldn't have the situation you had last spring. You'd go into your, your, your reserves and you said, we had a bad year, we had a recession, something happened and we have some emergency reserves. Last spring would have been, I would declare emergency and taken a million dollars, we wouldn't have the less we have, we wouldn't be backfilling what we're doing now. So for me, we should take this opportunity and put more into the stabilization account, not just the state minimum, because that should be the floor, not the ceiling. And I don't think anybody would be comfortable running their finances having a 5% reserve.
Agreed. All right. So I guess we'll take some motions if there's any, if there are any.
So I guess, is there an opportunity to, I guess, either vote in the article items individually or, you know, to Sandy's point, I think she has a valid point about, right? Is this going to continue the issue, kicking the bucket down the door as we always say, right? And we're just shifting where the dollars are going to be spread the next cycle? So is there an opportunity to amend the budget before we vote for it or vote for each of the items individually? How do we go about doing that?
We can go, I'll have the board's election if you'd like to go through. I mean, we're, we're going to do our separate votes, but we can do it line by line or...
And we have to do a roll call and vote.
I don't for each line. Thanks. That's okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marson. But we, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we can do, if there's a few that we all agree on that we should, we're going to go for, you can do a roll on one motion. That'll skip the line by line, but...
Yeah, I don't know, we agree on it yet.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Marson.
So if, both boards are going to have to vote individually anyways. So I don't know if it, how big a difference it makes if we go line by line and then you go line by line. I guess I don't understand the, if we just say yes on number four, we're going to, we're going to support number four and then the finance committee can decide if they support each line as it goes down. I don't think it does either board any good for us to go down one line and then what if we disagree on a line? We agree on one line and they disagree on it. How is that, I'm not sure how that...
Yeah, it would extend the meeting, but that's okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we, that the select board supports article number four, town meeting.
As, as written?
As written.
Is there a second? Okay. Alec, second. We'll go down line, Alec.
Yep.
Denise.
No.
Kevin.
No.
Roger.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So I don't know if you, if you want to take a vote or you want to wait until...
I have a question about the process. So, Mike, this might be a question for you. Mike.
Yeah.
So for the article, the FinCom will recommend an amount for article four and that will be in the motion at now meeting?
Yeah, so...
The amount that we recommend?
I can do that first. Yeah, so the motion, when you do make it, it would be 226,491 raised and appropriate and then $2,029.0. Did that change or is that...
That's the number.
That would be transferred from the FY '25 Water Enterprise operating budget and then the balance would be free cash right now, based on what submitted, is $792,520.58.
Okay.
Just to clarify, the 2,029 is a line item transfer within the Water Enterprise budget? That's not a, that's not a supplement. We're just allowing them to use that money to, money that was already appropriated at the main town meeting for general expenses to be used to pay interest on, on a note.
Do I have a motion?
Sorry.
It's okay, no, it's okay. Does anybody want to move it as, as written?
I'll make a motion to move it as written.
Second.
There's a second.
All right, so Zach?
Yes.
Paul?
No.
Trace?
No.
Paul?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
I'm a no, so it's three and three. Tie is a loss, right? Is it tie a loss?
Yeah.
Tie is a loss, okay. Do you want to make a different motion?
I don't recall if I'm going to vote on every one.
I mean, I would support that.
Madam Chair, could I make a motion?
Sure.
That we transfer 33,935 as budget supplements, raise it appropriate...
From free cash, right?
From free cash and raise it appropriate 226,491 and transfer within the water operating budget 2,029.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Zach?
No.
Paul?
Yes.
Trace?
Yes.
Paul?
No.
Brandon?
No.
And I'm a yes, so we're tied again. So we don't have anything to vote on.
Okay, so in that case, it will be moved. Let's figure it out.
Is that a move or anybody on the floor?
Yeah, anybody on the floor, you can vote it down. So I just think FinCom will be moving it. Okay. Do we want to vote on the, the stabilization and the, and the capital funding?
I'll just go with the cap, out of the capital. So my recommendation for capital is 1,500,000. The current balance in, in capital is 327,625.60. So adding the 1.5 million to the current balance would result in a total of 1,827,625.60. And if we fund the capital as recommended, we would be going to next year with a little over 700,000 in capital.
Any questions? I know we already...
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marson.
Did the capital committee vote on those?
Capital Committee did vote. I, I can tell you what they have voted on.
It was last night, right?
They are going to meet again because there was a mistake in one of the items for the fire department. So capital voted, I'll read all, all the items to you. They voted $10,000 to upgrade the camera system software in the assessors' office. They voted data processing. They voted $10,000 for replacement of end-of-life equipment and $36,702 to upgrade the town website. Police line cruises, 200,000 was approved and year three of five on the taser replacement program, 23,000. The fire department fought 450,000 in air pack replacement and that'll be coming out of ambulance. 649,800 for a tower truck and a fire engine. This is a bulk purchase that will save them money by buying both at the same time in the payment year. One of five coming out of ambulance, it would be 649,800. Station rehab repairs coming out of ambulance, 300,000 and dive water rescue equipment, 25,000. Emergency management, 65,000 for a Chevrolet 2500 pickup truck. And for the Norton Public Schools, 40,677 for technology displays leased to own in the Norton Middle School, it's year two of that program. Water heaters at the Norton High School, 132,132 and purchase of an athletic multipurpose bus, 70,000. The highway department, 149,500. This is for 2024 Peterbilt J- hook and can conversion, it's year two of five. And a trackless multipurpose tractor, year one of five, 250,000. And for water and store, 20,000. This is being added to an amount already appropriated, I believe, for a Chevy Silverado four-by-four cab and chassis and that would come out of water receipts. So the total coming out of capital, 987,011 coming out of ambulance reserve, what was that final figure, ambulance reserve?
A million or...
According to this, it's 775.
What's that number?
What? 1,244,800.
Yeah, that's still, that's what has to go back to capital to be voted. They're meeting next Tuesday.
Denise.
Mike, can you explain why the emergency management department request was for 58,795 for a pickup truck? And you and capital improvements committee approved 65,000, which is 6,205 cents, five, sorry, 6,205 over the ask?
Mr. Chairman, I made that motion, Denise. The reason being the water department tried to buy a truck about the same amount they couldn't get. So the request was put in, so the water department came back and asked for more money, delaying another six months. So I made the request and I spoke to chief who's going to order the truck so they wouldn't have enough money to buy a truck because it's hard to come by for that, for that kind of money. And any, any money that's in between would be returned back to free cash.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I don't have a, I have a question. Mr. Unitz? Is it possible that we, instead of putting 1.5 million into capital and 1 million into stabilization, that we equalize those even? 1,250,000 in capital and 1,250,000 in, to stabilization, just to try to put more into our stabilization account?
I can, so that, that's possible with the motion.
Yeah. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marson.
I make a motion that we put 1,250,000 into our capital account.
Hang on, what's this?
It's roundhouse number seven, article seven.
Article seven.
Make a motion that article seven be 1,250,000 into the capital improvement funding.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion on second, Alec.
Yes.
Denise.
No.
Kevin.
No.
Roger.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. You're welcome to vote on two people.
We're just doing capital right now, right?
Yeah, yeah, but this is just a capital meeting.
Take a motion, second.
I, I, I'm going to disagree with Mr. Marson and I would make a motion to move 1.5 million into the, into the stabilization account.
Capital.
Oh, we're talking capital?
Capital.
Okay, then I'll stick with the 1.25.
1.25?
Yes, same, same motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Zach?
Yes.
Paul?
No.
Trace?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Is that 1.5 or 1.25?
1.25. I'll make the next motion. I was a little ahead of myself.
Okay. So FinCom, so the count?
5-1.
5-1. Okay, I guess we can vote on stabilization since we're talking about that. That's the last one behind 19. That's the last one behind 19. We're jumping all over this, apologies.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marson.
I make a motion that we put 1.25 million dollars into the stabilization. Article number 19.
Okay, is there a second?
Done.
Motion on second. Alex.
Yes.
Denise.
I apologize, but this is Article 19.
19.
Yeah. I thought they would be together, didn't they?
Are we changing this from it with 1.5 and changing it to 1.25? Is that what's happening?
It would, yes.
It's, it's 1 million and what the motion was for 1.25.
So to put more into stabilization, to stabilize.
Okay, was that originally presented?
No, what was presented was 1 million.
Okay. And where's the 1.25 coming from?
From free cash. From what was, it's all coming from free cash, but the motion has reduced what I recommended go into capital.
Yeah, we reduced capital by the 250,000, so that's where that would be coming from.
Yeah, I find it would look like 2.5 to stabilization.
Is that officially a yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Wrong way of issuing to a yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, we agree. All right. Let's see if you give the same.
I'll make a motion to move 1.5 million from free cash to 1.25.
Second.
I made a motion for 1.5 million for the third time.
Second. All right, and motion on second, Zach?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Trace? Yes. Paul?
Is this 1.5, Zach?
Yes.
That's a yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
All right, and I am a yes as well. So six, zero.
1.5, six, zero.
Well, the fin comment, making my recommendation because it means it's going to pass.
Okay. Is that it for the free cash? Did I miss anything here? We've already voted on the note, right? Previously? To, to, I know I promised the school committee to get out of here early, but I'm sorry. It's not a half day, so I guess.
Just after school.
So I guess, I guess the next topic, just like I said, to help them get out of here sooner is the zoning bylaw, the great woods overlay district. I know we have Paul here. If he's ready. He's not listening to me. That's okay.
I am. Just kidding.
I'm just teasing.
Very short presentation, shoot up.
So this, this presentation, I know, has been presented to both of our committees before, but I think the planning board met on Tuesday and pared it down.
We did.
Okay, so I'll, I'll just get right to it. But it is on Zoom, so people on Zoom can see it. So yeah, hi, everyone. I'm Paul P. Giuseppe. I'm the Director of Planning and Economic Development. And as the chair mentioned, the planning board did meet on Tuesday to discuss looking at the selected parcels that this would be applied to. And if you'll recall, both Finance Committee and Select Board, we had promised to do that. And they did. And so you'll recall that there were a number of parcels that were originally selected to have this overlay district applied. But after they met and had a discussion and looking at some analysis provided by our consultant, which was the serpent, they selected just one parcel, and that was the PGA charities parcel located at 1 Arnold Palmer Boulevard. Part of the reason they were looking at that was to try to bring that unit count capacity requirement that, that the state looks at to try to bring it closer to the minimum that Norton has to achieve. And so by looking at this one parcel, the, the state said at Norton, the minimum has to be, the number of units to be generated by this was 750 units. And I just want to just there say, that is a, just a number. It, it doesn't represent anything in reality. It doesn't represent the fact that there were wetlands or other restrictions that limit numbers that, that reduce development. But what they did was they, they decided to go with this one parcel because it on itself can meet the requirements of the state. And so by doing so, they had brought the number down. At one point it was 1,700 units. And now with this one, we calculate based on what the state is looking at, at 1,093 units. But again, it's not going to be that much. And it won't be built at one time, if at all. And so that's into my presentation. Thank you, Paul. I appreciate it. I know you've said this a million times, so. I have one concern. I think Zach brought up the impact on the schools, which is why I wanted to make sure you're here for this. Does anyone on the school committee have concerns or questions?
Can we just ask for clarification? The state is requiring 750 units.
So the state is requiring that we designate part of town. They're doing this for, let's say, Eastern Massachusetts, that we require multifamily by right. Right now, our zoning bylaws is if you want to do three or more units, it triggers a special permit, which is the highest threshold for approval that the planning board will issue. But what the state says, we need to designate at least 50 acres at 15 units an acre where you cannot trigger a special permit. This is just part of their initiative to try to deal with the housing crisis that we're seeing, housing costs and so forth. The thought that try to promote more housing construction to get the inventory up and, you know, meet the demand. So what they said was a real simple thing that doesn't become simple. But they said Norton, based on your designation, you need to designate 50 acres minimum at 15 units an acre minimum. And that's where 750 comes up. We tried to slice and dice a parcel to get there. It didn't work and because of other factors, again, like wetlands. The board just felt that it was just made, it was just easier and cleaner to just designate this one. So again, it doesn't mean we have to build it. We don't have to do anything. A property owner doesn't have to build it. They don't have to sell it. We don't have to put infrastructure to help the developer make it happen. But we would be putting, giving that property a right that it doesn't have now. That property is some commercial, which does not allow residential. So it could, if this gets approved. All right, and then? Worst-case scenario that somebody comes in right after we approve this and they develop 1,000 units, which is highly unlikely in my opinion, but go ahead.
And then, there's a lot of talk around this, and I think getting the facts have been a little tricky here. From the planning board's standpoint, what are the recommending we do with this land?
Well, they were recommending that this one parcel be the place where we place it. It was, we had more parcels originally, but it is now shrunk to this one. But if, even from the planning board's perspective, if it builds as commercial, which is what it already is, that's fine. If they do it under this new zoning district, that's fine. But again, the, so the property owner could build commercial, they could, if this gets approved, be residential. Board doesn't have an interest as long as they're building something that's compliant with our bylaw.
Okay. So how many hypothetically builder comes in, wants to turn it all residential? How many units could fit there and be still within state guidelines from HEMEA overlay?
Well, unfortunately, I don't, we don't know that there's, there would be a lot of analytical work that we weren't scoped, we didn't have budget to do for this exercise. I don't know. But I'm confident that the 1,093 can't happen. And, you know, simply because the more you build, let's say, you know, every new residential unit you build, that's an additional parking space, which then becomes a larger stormwater pond. So there are things that eventually cap it. So, you know, I, I couldn't give you an estimate, and I don't even want to give a number because it'd be completely made up. But it's, you know, it's somewhere, something less than 1,093 units. Because again, that, that's just literally stacking units on top of the whole parcel, regardless of, like in this case, this one parcel has, we estimate about 14 acres of wetlands, which we don't allow to be built. Conservation Commission doesn't. And in fact, there's a 25-foot no-build buffer zone around the wetlands that comes off of it. And so, you know, is it still big parcel? Yes.
I mean, I think from a school standpoint, I mean, 750 units, it's hard to take a guess of how many school-aged children are moving in there without actually knowing what's going on. I mean, if you kind of look at the residents in town and how many kids we have in school, you can kind of take it around, give or take 30%. Obviously, with this land and probably being geared one to multifamilies and probably, I would think, that younger generation, because you're probably, you know, taking the train into Boston and doing whatever. I mean, I think our biggest concern is, is how many students that's going to draw? And what is that collateral damage, if you will, going to do to our budget when you're funding these kids at $19,000 per pupil, which is our current expenditures? You know, so from bringing in, let's call it, give or take, 300 kids, times 19,000, that's the number that we're going to be looking at from a school standpoint.
Anyone else?
Mom, Jackie knows that today that there's just so many unknowns to this project. We just still don't even know how many students would be at the Norton Links. 274 East Main, we only have 68 students there. I think we always anticipated more there. So it seems like at this time it's really hard to tell or even estimate.
So my comment on that too is, and I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, one, there's already sewer there, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so one, I mean, that's, that's rare in our town, having access to sewers or using that area, to me, is, is an automatic no. But also, there's no rules against putting this overlay over pre-existing buildings and, and houses or any other area. And that will, that would actually stem the building of 750, right? So that was, that was another issue. But we are required by the state to have this overlay at some point. Chair, if I may. But I've asked the state, I've emailed the person who's overseeing this initiative that very question. Our consultant was indicating to us that they would, it was there. When they've gone through training with the state on this, that that was something they were taking a hard look at. But I want to make sure, you know, we've done our due diligence and hear from them. One other thing I just want to make clear too is that we've also written this that we would allow a mixed-use building. So could they build all residential? Absolutely. But could they do first-floor retail with housing above it? They could do that too. All right, thank you, Paul. Any, any further questions, folks?
This is just for my own doing. What, is the state helping with any aid to this? Is there any money that's being allocated to this project?
They, they provided funding to help with consulting services. The flip side of that question is, is if we're not compliant, then there are funds that they, grant funds that they will, we will not be eligible for. Although that's, the, the amount or the types of grants now is subject to a lawsuit with another municipality. But there are grants that would be ineligible. But right now, the state is taking the, they're interpreting this as a whole lot of grants. You will be, you know, it'll be held against us if we find this not compliant. So we've been, you know, the board worked very hard to come up with an approach that balanced, you know, being compliant with trying to fit this in where they felt that was the best, you know, the best location in Norton. Not the only, you know, I want to make that clear. There's other sites that could have been. But there was a lot of, there was a pretty steep site analysis that our consultant helped us. This was one that showed up as a, you know, good location for it, but not the only one. So just to add to that, Nick, it's, it's not a project yet, it's just an overlay. So I mean, but it's, it could potentially be, and it would be quicker, in my opinion, if it was on this land that they're presenting because it's just empty land.
And have we done any analysis in terms of, and again, I know this is probably possible, but do we have some type of rough number of how much tax revenue would be brought in?
No, we did not. Our consultant did not. Again, it, it's, this is, we don't have it. And again, for the same reason, I can't tell you what could be built there because, you know, in development, it's just, there's so many variables and so many factors and different things that, that could affect this. So, you know, one thing I, and Mike, James, correct me, but when you look at 274 East Main, that's one of our second-largest tax revenue generator at 188 units. So, you know, again, will this ever get to 188 units? I don't, I don't know. All right, anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marson.
More of a statement than a question, but Paul has known that I've been opposed to this project in this spot since the first I heard of it. I think that not taking into account a total of 750 minimum new units in town does a disservice to our town. Using the sewer on that part of the town does a disservice to the town. And we could have overlaid this over existing units where the number, the gross number would have been much lower than the total of the 750 or whatever number fits on the properties. And the fact that it could have been spread out all over town. We only needed to have 25 acres in one spot, and we could have had five acre parcels on, in other parts of town to put it on. So for me, this is going to absolutely be a no. I understand there will be ramifications from it from the state. But I'm not a fan of doing things under the heavy hand of somebody telling us that we have to do something that's not in the best interest of our town.
Just to add a quick point to that, from a district standpoint, by putting all 50 acres on that side of town right now, which would be JCS district, is going to make sure all of those kids are currently, would be going to JCS. Where if we spread them out, we would be spread out, you know. Some kids go to LG, these kids go here, you know, and then we'd be able to spread them out across the schools a little bit better as well.
All right. Is there any other questions for the board? So otherwise I'll get going.
Let me chat through you. Paul, could you kind of spell out what the scenario would look like if this failed at our fall town meeting? Like, would we have to have a special town meeting before the end of the year? Or we just kind of like wait it out and see what happens with the state?
So what happens is, just come December 31st, if we're not, if we haven't adopted it, we will be not compliant. And we're looking into that because this is a lot more complicated than a typical rezoning because the, the state requires a lot of computations and using geographic information systems. And at this point too, our consultant, the money is all spent. It'll be tough to get anything done, you know, between October 21st and, I'm not saying it's impossible, it's, I, I'm trying to get clarification of what would need to be done in order to, if this were to not pass. And I just don't know. It'll be, it'll be a tight squeeze to try to get it in before the end of the year.
Yeah, I mean, it's just sounding like from a few people who spoke, that it doesn't sound like they're necessarily opposed to this, or just maybe opposed to where it is? Am I hearing that right?
That's, that's correct for me at least, yeah.
But it sounds like we'd have a very short period of time for you to rework new overlay maps, have a special, another special town meeting and then before the end of the year.
And then there's noticing requirements and, you know, which, I mean, there's a lot of things, it's not, it's, you know, it's never simple, but this is much more complicated than, than it. I haven't done it and it may, it might end up being something we have to do in-house. So we have to look at, but I'm trying to determine.
How long have you been working on this plan for, like in your public meetings?
Well, this was in earnest going on since Paul's last Well, this was in earnest going on since Paul's last year.
So from my understanding, the first, the first map that we saw was 1700 plus units or something like that, which I think everybody agreed was exorbitant and well over what the state required. And like Paul said, you have to notice all of those properties if you're going to put the overlay on them. I know at their last meeting, I think it was Rob Welsh presented a whole bunch of different options all around town and those, as though they are great, I think a lot of them are great, we couldn't use them for this town meeting because we have to notice those owners too. And I do know, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, Foxborough declined there, they voted it down at town meeting and I do know that they're going to vote it down again in November, I believe, that's what I've been told. So we're not going to be the only city if that happens and I think, again, that's my opinion, I'll go to anybody else.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. President.
I just want to be clear that I don't think we should be not in compliance with the state and what they want. I just don't think that this is the best spot for what's going on in our town right now.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. President.
For you, did the planning board look at spreading the parcels out throughout town? And so what was the result of that analysis?
I'm not aware if they were looking at spreading it. I think they were trying to be as contiguous as possible. They did look at, if you recall the presentation, they actually looked at the entire town to try to start determining where would be the best areas to find it, but I'm not aware that they were ever discussing, since I've been here, there was never a discussion of them splitting it up.
Paul, one last question. I know Ken wasn't here last time, but if I remember from the last conversation, the last meeting, there is certain percentage of it that has to be contiguous, is that correct?
Right. At minimum, one of them has to be 50 acres and there's other, other.
The minimum was 25, was one of them had to be 25.
The total is 50. Has to be, no, the largest has to be 50, I believe, 50%, I think. But they have criteria that we would have to, you know, what they don't want is, they don't want it chopped up, but they don't.
The smallest had to be 50, I apologize for interruption, the smallest had to be 50 acres, right? And then the, the, one parcel couldn't be smaller than 50% of that, so it'd have to be 25 acres.
Maybe you're right, you may be right on that. You know, I haven't, since they never looked at it, that wasn't something.
They didn't look at it that way.
Well, I, they may have before I arrived, but by the time I was here, they were honed in on doing a one district, but you can do sub-districts.
Okay, and Nick, have a question?
Could you just clarify, if we're not in compliance with the state come January 1st, the penalties that the town would receive is we wouldn't be able to apply and receive any grants based on what is in that, whatever grants that the HPTA is putting out?
They specified which grants.
Gotcha. Do we know how much money we've made off those grants over the last five years?
I can tell you since 2018, we've made four and a half million.
Off of both grants.
And at our last meeting, we discussed that too and three and a half million of that is what's being used towards the Elm Street project.
Right.
Yeah. If there's none of the other questions, I know some people. Oh, who's that?
Alan.
Alan, Chair?
No, Paul, sorry.
Paul, go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, I just had a question though. I thought there was some real misunderstandings as far as what grants are actually covered by the law and what are just some heavy handed after the fact threats, Paul? And I don't know if you could clarify that because I didn't think the grants that were actually enumerated in the law were going to affect the town or not in one iota.
So there were four that are spelled out specifically in Mass General Law. Mass Works, which is what we received the three and a half million dollars from, that was the first time we've ever received it. There's a new grant called Housing Works, which is similar to Mass Works, except it's available to, for promoting housing. There's the Housing Choice Grant, which we've not applied for, and then there's the Local Capital Fund, which we have, but those are absolute, those are definitely in the statute or in the Mass General Law. Then there's about 14 or 15 others that are listed as in the guidelines that the state produced, which they say that we will be looking at you, any of you towns for these grant, at these grants if you aren't complying. So what does that mean? You know, it probably means that we get a negative mark. I don't know that that necessarily means we can't apply for those, but that, these are very competitive grants and a mark like that could be, could be tough for us to overcome.
Thank you, Paul. I follow up, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Paul.
If we end up passing the verbiage, which was not article at the town meeting, but we're just not set on the location or the mapping, I find it hard to believe that the state wouldn't be lenient given us a reprieve until, say, the spring town meeting to finalize the mapping to get it right.
My, what I've been observing, but obviously not, obviously we're not there, but they're, they're playing pretty tough on this. There's a, the deadline says December 31st of this year. I think they will, my guess is they will interpret that, that come January 1st of 2025, you're not in compliance, you know, until, until you've, you know, adopted a bylaw that they end up reviewing and saying you're fine.
Thank you, Paul.
The grants are one thing, but compared to the damage that this could do to our community, millions of dollars a year to our school system, to our water department, to our public safety, it's peanuts to even be considering the grants as to the big picture of this whole thing. You know, I appreciate all the work you've done, Paul, and the planning board, but from the outside looking in and from 10,000 feet in the meetings I have watched, it seems to me that, and I said, say to this to you at the finance meeting, we should have been opening up a planning toolbox and putting up every obstacle we could, even the chairman of the planning board said, I wouldn't touch this with a dead foot pole. And from looking, from 10,000 feet looking at it, it looks to me like we're rolling out the red carpet with the location that's being picked. And for that reason, I don't care what anybody votes here. My crystal ball's broken, but this is dead on arrival at town meeting, you know, if I were, if I were betting then. So I mean, I think, put everything aside, regroup is my opinion, in the spring and bring it to the spring town meeting. I don't think the state's going to do anything. The damage, the damage is far worse that can be done to the school system and to our community than any of these grants have to offer.
Okay, I know a couple, a couple of people in the audience wanted to speak, so I guess I'll bob first and then we'll be done.
Bob Campbell, 51 Pine Street. I have, I obviously have some great concerns about this. Paul and I talked a couple of months ago about this, this project, some of my concerns about it at that point. I'm pleased to see the planning board is just trying to narrow it down to a certain area of Mansfield Avenue. And in Paul's defense, he hasn't been here very long. He was here before, but he came back. So he hasn't really been involved as much and I appreciate all the time that the planning board has put into this, I really do. My concern is this, and there's a couple of histories here that I can go over. First of all, most location, and I think we've already read that the location is probably questionable. In the law that I've become very aware of, after reading it 500 times, it does not require us to have town sewage or town water, but yet we're giving it to these future potential developers as an opportunity to use that. And by doing so, we're creating a couple of problems, creating a density issue, because if you have to build a Title V system, after you build these three story structures, it's going to take up a lot more land in order to do that. And by allowing municipal sewage to be utilized, it actually gives them an opportunity to develop a lot more land, a lot more houses, you know, much smaller space. The Otto Palmer Boulevard adjustment, I think is a very good idea, but on the other hand, if you look at the recent development on Leonard Street and the impact it's had on our tax base, including some of the money, by the way, this free cash came up this year under the new growth, you realize that the TPC is probably one of the last great places we'll have to put any kind of industrial purposes to use to create or increase our tax base. It's basically designed for it. If we give this parcel up, we give away all the potential possibilities of this high impacted tax base that we can have in the future that we won't have. It mentions commercial in the law. Commercial is nothing more than a beauty shop, convenience store, anything of that sort, which could be put on the first, first floor of the building. It doesn't mention any industrial. So by giving up this parcel, we're giving up all the industrial land we have lost in town, in my opinion, that we can utilize in the future. Leonard Street was perfect because it would have 195 and had less of an impact on the traffic situation in the town. San Antonio Park and Mansfield Avenue, if we give it up, after all the years since 1987, we've been fighting to put sewage in town, we're giving up one of our most premium locations to do so and it just doesn't make sense. If we can put it on Taunton Avenue or near Old Colony, on those ends of town, which by the way, is the only part of town we have a bus at Mansfield. We have no buses going down Mansfield Avenue anymore. We tried to do these satellite parking areas a few years ago, they didn't work with people that didn't want to park their car, get into a bus and get into a train. The HPTA is throwing this thing down our throat. We are too far outside of the business Boston proper to live, in my opinion, to be forcing this type of zoning on a town that really doesn't really need it at this time. We don't have that ability to make it work. My other concern, by the way, my final concern on that is brown water. You think we're here with brown water now? Wait and see what happens. We're just adding 750 units of house. Our aquifer is only designed to pour so much water to our wells. The more housing we build, the more water we use, the further out the aquifer goes, the more magnesium and iron we're pulling into the system. So we had 750 on top of morality building, say in my neighborhood on High Street, don't be in the homes down the street. You know, you keep adding all these houses, it's going to become a problem. As most of you may know, if you know me, I've been involved for a few years, 40Bs have always been one of my biggest, most vocal points that I can, I can imagine. There are good ones, the 40B behind the McDonald's, surprisingly, I did vote for that. I approved of that. I thought that was a mess, misuse for that piece of property. The problem with 40Bs is all through this new bylaw, by the way. It doesn't require us to have them, but they have a right, there is a right and a use to be able, to be able to build 40Bs. If you don't know what a 40B is, it's really designed to circumvent all our bylaws and it just pretty much puts us up to pasture. We have no control over it, we have no say, we can appeal it, we can fight it in court, it's going to come and it's going to happen. It's just not going to go away. The 40B presently built on Norton, it's called Norton Links, it's the one behind Ripley Side and McDonald's. Just to give you an idea, I called a day to find out about them. I know what you guys paid for your mortgages, but here we go. You want to run a studio, it starts at $2160, $2,160. This isn't affordable project now, keep this in mind. If you want one bedroom, it starts at $2,500. Two bedroom, it starts at $3,200. If you have enough kids, you need a three bedroom house, that starts at $42,000, $4,265 a month.
Which property is this bought?
This is the new 40B behind McDonald's, next to McDonald's, Norton Links. The $4,265, by the way, is $51,180 a year in rent. Imagine, imagine that that possibility. Many income level based on what we do here in Norton is based on the city of Boston. It's not Providence, where the average count, person makes roughly $91,000 a year. It's not Taunton, it's $72,782, $91378 in Attleboro, it's none of those. They use that median income, that Boston median income to determine how much our rents are going to be. That's why they're having these extraordinary, extraordinary rents, which are out of our minds to us. But if you live in the city of Boston, you think, oh, that's a hell of a buy. I mean, that's a great deal. So median income in Boston is $133,027. Median income in Norton is $112,284. I don't know who your people are, but it's $112,284. That's based on a five year estimate that was presented recently. The mileage from the Xfinity Center to the train station in Mansfield, 4.5 miles. Nobody's going to walk it. In fact, I've never seen anyone walking from the train station to go to the Xfinity. I don't think I've ever seen that happen. If you go from the, from the Xfinity to Attleboro, 7.9 miles. It just doesn't make sense that the state is forcing this type of zoning down on us. It doesn't make sense to me. At the same time, I respect the fact that they have to comply with the law. We've got to come up with a way to make this all happen. And how we're going to do that, I suppose, is to go back and take another look at how we're, how we're, how we're going to designate certain parcels of land in town. And again, I'm going to use a scenario that on the Taunton line, on Taunton Avenue, Eddie Street in that area, there's a very large parcel, large parcel of land out there. Not so much on the, on the old colonial side, but there are people, there are places in town that we can do that. 40B is a scary, scary opportunity for these developers to come in and circumvent. And by the way, it's not about affordable housing to them, it's about making money. They're contractors, they develop, they're coming in to make money. They're not coming in before some small schmuck up the street needs, needs a place to live. That's not how it works. It's to make money and they get all kinds of incentives to make it happen. It does not allow senior housing, which is something in my mind, if you want to create the ability to create some kind of housing that people, first time buyers can come and go and buy, what you do is you create affordable senior housing that us all folk can move out, go into my those and sell our home. And then you can come in, you can renovate it from when I built it, whenever I built it. You can take out my old refrigerator, my green stove and you can, and you can make it your own, but you can't do that under these guidelines. They will allow seniors to live there, but you can't allow senior housing. You know, the requirement is called the density bonus, which is really scary. That's the one they have, Paul?
Yes.
Pay attention to that one. The density bonus allows them extra 10 feet. So that one on three stories, I have a four stories high. That's a real problem. And by the way, I'm not quite clear what happened on, on the one over on Mansfield Avenue, but that's four stories high, even though they, they claim it to be three stories, it's four stories. So I'm not sure what that's all about. But if you take that scenario based on our present limitation, I think for 35 feet height, 35 feet, we can maximum, we can go 35 feet.
In the, this proposed district?
In, no, in our present zone.
Some of them can go 40?
Okay, 25, 40 feet. So let's make it 50, 55 feet. You know, it's just insane that, you know, we would allow that to happen. And even though the article hits on certain key items, it doesn't hit on the whole, whole law. You really need to read the law because it refers to law in the zoning change that we're trying to make here, but it doesn't tell you what it is. So be very careful. And as far as the grants that we're talking about, like Paul mentioned, we just have one now on the table for three and a half million dollars. We haven't used most of those. So they throw these grants out, they make it sound like they're going to take away our chapter 90 funds or our chapter 70 funds. It's not the case. Most of these grants have to be brownstone buildings, our old, old infrastructure that has to be, has to be taken and maintained. Probably the only good scenario we have there would be the Elm Street, reading bottom property, which is probably could fall under brownstone, we might be able to get a few bucks in the government, then take it down, but that's about it. So I'm opposed to this, I can't, I can't support it. I can't, I can't support it. It is present state, I think we need to do some more work, and I think we need to consider going back, not to a special town meeting, because we're not going to have time to do it. To do this thing and do it right, and really initially understand it, I'm going to encourage you to go back in the spring with a complete understanding of what it's all about, and let's make sure it's something we do it and we do it right, because once this thing is passed, folks, we're in trouble.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Do we have, we have anyone else in the audience who want to speak?
Hello, my name is Val DeBrau. I live at 50 Mansfield Avenue, which is the street that this is being proposed on. One thing that I want to note is that they're suing Milton, if you hadn't noticed, for not being in compliance with this law. So Foxborough is trying to not do it, we might try to not do it. The state is not messing around with this. They're already pursuing legislation against Milton, it's been all over the news. When we have been talking, I'm on a street that has already had sewer proposed to be added for an apartment building, which most apartment buildings are probably going to want to add. We had a huge amount of resistance to the idea of running it down 140, because even though we weren't going to be in the situation that 47 Elm Street and all the Elm Street people would be in, people didn't want to tie in, they didn't want to be forced to tie in, they didn't want to feel like they had to tie in, even though that project, I believe, was covered by the developer, not the town paying for it. Abutters don't get excited about having their roads ripped up and having to be forced to be on sewer. So this whole idea that we can just split it up and put it everywhere, we'll put a little parcel over here and a parcel over there, then every one of these meetings turns into the abutters to all of those properties showing up and saying, I don't want that in my neighborhood, because it's what happened on my street, it's what's happening with Elm Street, and no one's going to build an apartment building to fit all of this without having sewer on it. So I understand that this is a really great industrial parcel, but it also fits us into being able to comply without having 75 meetings of all the abutters from every single parcel coming in and saying, I don't want that near me, well, I don't want that scary 40B near me. Also, anywhere that you were talking about from Mansfield Avenue here, I don't know if anyone's heard of bicycle, but an awful lot of people do bicycle, as someone who used to commute into Boston every day from Mansfield, an awful lot of people bicycle. Four miles is not a bad bicycle ride. Taunton Avenue is on the other side of town from the train station, about a four mile bike ride from Mansfield Avenue is actually not that bad. So I don't think we can write it off as, well, no one's going to take the train anyway, especially because I know a lot of people from Norton who right now do go to Mansfield to take the train. I wouldn't really want to, but I'm lucky I can work from home. And I'm curious about the numbers on this idea of 40B. So my rent in 2010 in the center of Mansfield for a little tiny two bedroom was like $850, so almost $1,000 a month. 14 years ago, Norton Links isn't affordable overall. 40B does not work such that every single unit in that building now has to be affordable. So a one bath, a studio, one bath is $2,100, a one bed is $2,350. That's not the affordable. The affordable for a studio was $1,650. The affordable for a one bedroom was $1,800. So acting like they don't, affordable doesn't matter where they're not actually going to do it. The statute requires 20% to 25% has to be affordable. So I understand that it sounds like, oh, well, this won't even be that affordable in the end and all of that, and it's scary, and I know everyone's always scared of 40B because I grew up in West Bridgewater, as I keep saying, but the, I don't know if we are ready for the reality in this town of deciding to vote this down for what I personally would consider scaremongering, which I know nobody in Norton likes. I'm not sure we're ready, though, to get sued, which we're already seeing happening. And I don't think you can call that scaremongering, because it's on the news every day that Milton's getting sued. Thank you.
Thank you, Val. All right, well, we have one more from the audience, and then we can take some motions.
Mark Swinney, 14 Laurel Lane. Thank you, Val. But Milton's already on the Supreme Judicial Court, so it's at a higher level than just, you know, it's at a high level already. So we'll see what happens when the Supreme, Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court comes through and see what they have to say. But again, I'll summarize real quick what Bob just said. To back this up, it's not scaremongering or anything like that. It's basically, we've got the best prime property, you know it, it's got the sewer going right there, it's a beautiful property. If you don't know where it is, it's going up the hill, going to the TPC, and it's just great property. We can split the property, right? The Serpent said we can split the property?
Let's have everything directed to the chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, through the chair, can I ask?
The plan?
Yeah, the Serpent, yeah, the property can't be split.
Can't be split, so we could, right now, they're at 1,100. We could skinny it down to 750. I know you're going to get into water and things like that, but we've got a plan out there that's going to be presented, that's telling everybody as a town meeting, it's going to be 1,100 units. So that was going to be what? Somebody said 300 students? I'm looking at 500 or something like that. You put that all together, and, actually, the 300 that you said, Nick, sorry, that's another $6 million. That number pops up again. You know, that's what it's going to cost at $18,000 a student. Brown water, if you don't like your brown water, obviously, nobody knows, nobody wants it, they're going to, the town is going to have to open up the wells that they have right now. Well number one up on Pine Street, which is pumping brown water now, they're going to have to increase it to meet the daily capacity. So if you think you're going to have brown water now, wait till you, wait till later on. Again, school enrollment, 300, 500, pick a number, they're all going to go to what? The Somnies, as you said? No, I think we're going to have to build a new school just for this project. So scaremongering? No, this is just reality of it. The traffic along 140, going into Mansfield, Mansfield Avenue, and then down at the end, the other end, down by the church, at the Town Common. You think it's all backed up on Mansfield Avenue, going right there, 123, 140? Because not everyone's going to go out of that road and go left to go to Mansfield. They are going to go to the right and back that property right there, or back up that So again, you've got 7,000 households, this is going to add another 1,000. You know, it's another 15% overnight in. If you give it to them, an overlay like that, apartments are very popular right now, people can't afford a single unit house that's now $400,000, okay? These things are, you know, more like $600,000 in Norton, things like that, you know? If people can't afford it, they're going to go to the apartments. These things are being put up because the millennials, the Gen Z, they can't afford a house, they're going to have to rent, and that's what they want. Those units that are above that towering above McDonald's, those are going to be filled up right away at either $2,000 plus or $4,000 a month, or 1,600 if they're 40Bs. They're going to be, they're going to be used, they're going to be filled up right away. You know, if I can get this to say. And then losing the funding. We don't use that funding. I mean, we did on one of these grants, but the other ones, they're Mickey Mouse money grants that shouldn't, they're paper tigers as far as what the state is going to sue us for or whatever, or stop us from having. They're paper tigers, the way I look at it. I'm not worried about the planning grants. They're small, they're very limited, they're a small amount of money. So right now, it's a definite vote no, it's dead on arrival at the town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swinney. So with all that being said, do we have any motions we'd like to entertain?
I'll make a motion to approve Article 17, zoning map amendment, amend the zoning map to add, adding the Great Woods overlay district.
Okay, that's on the map, correct.
Oh, sorry, Article 16, I should do first, right?
Either way.
Well, we'll do that for a second.
Okay, so you're using 16th amendment?
All right, so let me, I'll make a motion.
I just want to make sure everybody's clear.
I'll make a motion to approve this Article 16, zoning bylaw amendment, creating zoning bylaw, Article 23, Great Woods Overlay District Amendment to apply General Law 40A, Section 3A.
Second. Okay, motion in the second. Alec, if you're still there.
Yes, no.
Okay. That was such a question. Denise?
Yes.
No.
Okay. Kevin?
Yes.
Roger?
No.
And I have a no. Okay. And you've already voted on that one, correct?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider Article 16.
Motion to reconsider, but I have a second?
Second.
All right. Zach?
This is, we're voting to reconsider. So yes.
Okay, Paula?
Yes.
Trace?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Right?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Article 16 as presented.
Second. Can I, Zach?
No.
Paula?
Yes.
Trace?
Yes.
Paul?
No.
Brandon?
No.
And I am a yes. So 3-3.
3-3.
Let's see, Patrick.
Okay. I want to entertain another motion for Article 17. Or any and all of them, if you'd like to. Perfectly fine with me.
I'll make a motion to approve Article 17, zoning map amendment, amend the zoning map to, by adding the Great Woods Overlay District.
Second.
Okay, motion in the second. Alec?
No.
Denise?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Roger?
No.
And I have a no.
Article 17?
Yes.
Madam Chair, motion to approve Article 17 as presented.
Second. All right, motion second. Zach?
No.
Paula?
Yes.
Trace?
Yes.
Paul?
No.
Brandon?
No.
And I am a yes, we're 3-3 again.
It's going to be some kind of record.
No.
Okay, I guess we can move on. We can go down the line now, Mike? Oh, yeah, we, yeah, they're waiting patiently.
So, Madam Chair?
So first, does the school committee want to stay, or you can, you're welcome?
I know you're having so much fun. Take me with you.
This is because you'll have to close your meeting, so if you want to close it, you can close it.
I'm going to close our October 10th School Committee Joint Meeting with the Fin, Fin Council Board. All those in favor?
I don't know. We're closed.
Thank you for joining us, guys. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have, we're still going to skip around here, we're going to talk about the demolition of the, of the town, of the town hall. I don't, nobody in Asia lays in 6 o'clock. So do you, Ms. Stevens, do you want to speak to this person? Then I can come on.
12? Yeah.
I'm sorry, yeah, Article 12.
It's Article 11 and 12.
We're in a long stretch, folks.
So the first article will repurpose funds that were previously approved for various stages of the project and move those into the project. So Article 10, we have, Article 12 of the annual town meeting of 2016, that was for Senior Center parking lot, this $34,800. Article 6 of the special town meeting, October 2019, that was for a town hall senior center site evaluation, $8,975, 21 cents remains. Article 6 of the special town meeting, October 2019, town hall senior center conceptual layout, 70,000 remains on that article. Annual town meeting, May 2018, town hall feasibility study, $1,733.16. And the annual town meeting, May 2018, the senior center feasibility study, $727.17, for a total of $116, $235.54. And this article was approved by the Finance Committee, and as I said, it would move that money into the projects, the town halls, and the senior center projects.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Stevens.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Article 11 as written.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens, second.
I'll second.
Motion in the second. Alec?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And I have a yes.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Ms. Stevens.
Article 12, the purpose of Article 12 is a clarification. So the town, we were authorized to borrow $40,762,000 by, previously, that was in May of 2021 at the special town meeting, Article 1. And that $40,762 was broken out, the amount for the failed project, the amount for the senior center, and the amount for the town hall. And what this, purpose of this article is just to say that any money remaining out of the total project could be used for completion of the projects, which are now the town hall and the Norton Senior Community Center.
Any questions or motions?
Do you want to speak?
Mr. Slattery, if you'd like to speak, you can, you're up.
I wouldn't like to, but I will.
Just four trees to kill.
It's awful high for an old guy.
First of all, I'm Jim Slattery, 3630 Street. I hope you like it. Sooner or later, we'll get the AVIT stuff in, we're working on it. What we're proposing, the town manager already explained, page one to you. What happened was at the last building committee meeting, the committee decided that they wanted to do the full demolition of the Old Town Hall. What had happened is during the progress of the buildings, we had to cut back certain things. On the senior center, we cut back parking spaces, we cut back patio and back, we cut back the commercial kitchen, we cut back something of the brick on the town hall, we cut back the full demolition, just did the demolition of the food pantry, we cut back a brick facade and did the cement clapboard, because we figured that, you know, it doesn't really mix in with the other buildings, but it's still colonial, it still looks good, and I don't think anybody will complain now that it's done. But in order, because of COVID and the rising construction costs that were going on when we did this three years ago, within our business, we had to cut out certain, and I know, and a few of the board members were concerned, that we sold these three projects, the athletic field, the town hall, and the senior center, on the fact that the Old Town Hall was a demolition project. And in fact, it was not. It was, didn't have an occupancy permit, it didn't have good HVAC, the police department had used a cellar for firing range, so there was gunpowder residue throughout the whole building, there was all kinds of other problems that the building probably should have been demolished, and that's what we said. and that's what we said we would do. But in order to save the taxpayers' money, we cut that out of the budget because certain people thought they could use the building for storage and whatever. But going along, we realized the bids for the projects came in low. The bid for the town hall was $1 million under what we projected. The bid for the senior center was $800,000 under, so already we had saved $1,008,000. Um, we got a donation from a past citizen, Mr. Nelson's family, of $1,006,000 for the senior center, so you add that up. And in talking during our committee meeting, we realized, like you see in Article 11, that there's, these are five projects, there's still, and I call it pots of gold, you can call it William One, but there's these pots of gold sitting out there that we haven't spent. So all this money has been paid for by the taxpayers already. It's not earmarked for anything, so we decided that we should go to a demolition, a full demolition of the Old Town Hall, which is anything beyond the brick facade, if you're wondering. And that that's, we already did Page 1. Page 2 is what we're talking about now. Page 3 is, uh, but we asked the present contractor because they're on property, so they don't have to mobilize or anything else. They're familiar with the project, they're familiar, they helped lead people out of the Old Town Hall. And we thought that with this extra cash that's here, and I'll go further on to explain others, that we could demolish the whole town hall. And I have to put in a caveat now, I complain every week about phone calls. I already got a phone call from the meeting Tuesday night that why is the contractor? The contractor told us that he could do the full demolition at a million point 3, and I'm not gonna read all the numbers. But then our OPM, Mona's project manager, came in with all these numbers underneath of other things that weren't covered by the project for demolition. The one person called me accused the contractor because we haven't gotten approval from the town meeting to spend the extra cash that's floating around all over the place, that the contractor raised the cost of the demolition to 2.2. Well, everything past 1 is not the contractor's fault, so I'm saying I made a mistake. Let's do no more, I don't do social media for that very reason because I think it's a PIA. And, you know, if you've got a problem with me, call me, everybody else does. And I'll try to explain it to you the way I can, but that, so right now, the cost of the project will be approximately $2.2 million. So what we're doing, if you look at Page 4, is for the town hall, we appropriated $23,290,000. So far, we've spent $22,466,000. We have $823,000 left over. On the senior center, we appropriated $11,110,000. And then I have no idea what the added code, COA funding is, but it is what it is. And then the project budget to date, we spent $10,405,199, leaving $739,000. You add those two figures up, we have $438,000 left. You take the $116,000, that comes in, and I don't know where we got all the other money from, but let's see what's on the next page. So, uh, so what we're asking the town meeting to do is to take the money from Article 11, which is $116,000, and anything that's left over. We already know we have 75, I, do I have the exact figure on the, you know, the 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 74, on Page 4 at the bottom, the 74,000 is what's left over from the athletic fields. That's the money that's left over for the part that was funded and for that. So we're asking the town to take all these extra funds that are floating around, or my pots of gold, combine them all, and we can pay for demolition of the Old Town Hall. And I would say that's, I'm done. If anybody's got any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Slattery.
The last thing I'll say is, I promised the town we'd come in on time and on budget. It wasn't my fault, I wasn't building the buildings, so we didn't come in on time. We were like two months or three months behind schedule, but we're on the budget. As far as the demolition of the Old Town Hall, I'm making no promises, and I'll say that straight up right away. This is all pie in the sky stuff, I, we have concrete figures. We have the five articles that we already proved to you that there's money out there. I'm telling you, the other two buildings, we should have money left over. And we get rid of the Old Town Hall and we destroy it in $2,024 instead of $2,044 when the building starts falling down. And then the fire department can take over part of the Old Town Hall that's part of the new construction of the fire station, because they need it for their, basically, they got four female firefighters and they have to make accommodations, both showers and locker rooms and bedding and everything else. So they're gonna use the, I call it the new Old Town Hall part of the building. But right now, the contractor is working on destroying the food pantry and the ramp into the police station because that was part of the food pantry. And they're doing everything but actual hardware stuff. Some of the stuff that, the design fees on Page, I didn't give you that page, but, okay.
Sorry, Mr. Slattery, I think we're gonna, we're gonna move to any questions?
Okay, fine, but all of that works for me.
Are there any questions from the board on this, Article 12? It's the the wording for combining those funds.
It's the wording for abusing the funds, right?
Yeah.
I just wanna get clarification, I mean, approving the wording that is revised 10-6? Or the one that's in, was in our packet?
The wording that you use is, I think, in your packet. To see if the town will vote to authorize the expenditure of the remaining balance of the collective amount of $40,762,000 approved under a vote the town passed at the May 21st special town meeting, Article 1, for the town hall, town senior and community center, and community athletic projects to be used for all purposes set forth instead of Article 1 or take any action relative thereto.
So not the version that explains what it's being used for?
Yeah, it wasn't necessary because Article 1 referred to demolition. So it was just a duplication of.
Okay.
Any questions? Does that want to entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Snyder?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Article 12 as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion of the second. Alec?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Madam Chair? Could I ask a question to the select board of the town manager about that? On one of the handouts Mr. Slattery gave us at the FinCom, there was penalties for being late on the buildings that you said you didn't think you were gonna. I have been, I have been advised by council not to answer that question because it's a legal matter and we're not allowed to discuss legal matters. My vague question to the board and the town manager, are you planning on pursuing that avenue? Yes, I am, I'll talk to the board.
Yeah.
We have it discussed, yeah, it hasn't been discussed.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so what do we, what do we have left here, Mike? Just a couple of more?
Yeah, you have Article 3. So Article 3, I'm recommending, I'm recommending this under Chapter 110 Personal Bylaws. Article 1, this is policies and procedures. And in the policies and procedures, it says the town manager shall, from time to time, review the salary plan and he shall keep informed as to pay rates and policies outside the service in town and shall recommend to the town any action he deems desirable to maintain a fair and equitable pay level. And so we had a compensation study done by Gov HR, was completed back in April. And the, you have in the article the current ranges and the proposed ranges. And this does not give anybody a pay raise. There is no one that would be below the minimum in the ranges. So this does not result in a pay raise for anyone under this article. It's just setting the ranges.
Do you have any questions? Well, you haven't voted on this yet, have you, Phil?
No.
Okay. No, I'm glad, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Murphy?
I make a motion and we recommend Article 3 as written.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All right, motion of the second. Alec?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve Article 3 as presented.
Second. All right, motion of the second, Zach?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Trace?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Okay.
Have you a drink? That was the easiest one, only. Then the other, I don't know if you wanna vote on capital recommendations. I wanna wait until, I mean. For me, I think it was just a, just an accounting error, I think. Okay. I think it's gonna be a 10-second meeting on Tuesday.
Okay, those are the ones that you went through previously?
Yes.
So do we have any further questions on the capital recommendations?
Are you talking about Article 8?
Yes, uh, yes, I'll, thank you.
Yep, just making sure. Uh, Mr. Chair?
Uh, Mr. Snyder?
I would like to make a motion to approve Article 8 as written.
I thought it was to adjourn, but okay.
Second.
All right, Alec?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Roger?
May I ask a quick question, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
That's with the the changes that we put into it?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay.
Madam Chair, this is a quick question. The number that is different is the total ambulance reserve fund. That new amount, in here, it says $775,000, but that's what's changing, right?
Yeah.
So they'll be reborn then?
Yeah. Coming out of the ambulance reserve fund will be $1,424,800. And out of capital, $987,011. Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd motion to approve Article 8 as written.
All right, Zach?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Trace?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Okay, I think that that covers all of them. Mr. Snyder, if you're willing to make a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Snyder.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Motion of the second. Alec?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you, Alec, for for joining us. I know you're in trouble down there.
All right. Motion. You have a chair, you have to make a motion to adjourn.
All right, Zach?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Trace? Brandon? Brandon and Paul, yes.
Are we still on for Monday night?
No, we're jonesing people's.
We're done. Paul, you've been retired a long time, Mondays are holidays.
I'm a yes, so I think we're adjourned, thank everybody.